And, um, Mayor, can you turn your mic on too, please?
You want me to start over again? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Okay, good evening, everyone. I was talking without the mic. It's Monday, November 3rd. Welcome to our November 3rd, um, regular meeting of the City of Cali Mesa Council Meeting. We're going to call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Darlene, can you do the roll for me, please?
Yes. Councilmember Condit?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Manley?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cervantes?
Here.
Mayor Molina?
Yes, thank you. And for the record, City Manager Cobos here, City Attorney Flowers here, City Clerk Gertis, Finance Director Reed, Planning Director Lucia, Public Works Director Shakir, City Engineer Thornton, Deputy Chief Shaw, and Captain Northrup are all here as well. Um, if you would all please stand, we'll salute the flag in our country. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. So this evening, we're pleased to have a presentation by the, for the Blue Zones Project, and we'll be welcoming Ruben to the mic. Good to see you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, before it starts, can I do a briefly introduction for the presentation, please?
Oh, sure.
That's good. Well, thank you, Ruben, for being here and for everybody being here as well, too. Uh, I would like just to take a brief moment and share why tonight's Blue Zone Project presentation is so important to me and for our community. Over the past several months, I've been speaking with local health leaders, residents, professors from the University of Redlands and regional partners about how we can make Cali Mesa not only a beautiful place to live, but a healthy place to live. Through those conversations, it led me to reach out to the Blue Zone Project with, uh, Ruben and invited them to present tonight because I truly believe that this initiative can help us take the next step towards improving the well-being of every Cali Mesa residents. The Blue Zone framework has proven cities and partner, uh, participate, see lower chronic disease rates, stronger communicate, uh, community connections, and even increased local business engagement. It focuses on a simple lasting change, improving walkability, supporting health, food options, expanding parks and trails, and strengthening our sense of belonging. These are the values that reflect who we are already as a city. This presentation isn't just informative, it's also an opportunity to envision Cali Mesa's future. We can connect this to our strategic plan update, our parks and recreation goals, and even regional wellness and economic development efforts. For our seniors, it means healthier lives, close to family and community. For our youth, it means building habits of wellness and civic pride. And for our working families, it means a city that prioritized their health and quality of life. I want to thank the City Manager, Will, and the staff for coordinating this, uh, uh, presentation with Mr. Gonzalez and the Blue Zone team. I hope that after tonight's presentation, we can continue this discussion formally, exploring how Cali Mesa could partner with Blue Zone to develop the local initiatives. This is about more than just one program. It's about setting the vision in for healthier and happier and more connected Cali Mesa. Thank you, guys. And I'll leave it up to you, Mr.?
Wow, that, thank you. I appreciate that. I pretty much, Edgar, uh, you covered it all. I think I can go home now, honestly. That was fantastic and well said. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia, and, uh, good evening, Mayor, and fellow councilmembers. It's very, very good to see some of the familiar faces and some of the new ones. I'm very grateful to be here. I was a former councilmember in the city of Banning, and now I get to serve, continue to serve my community in the Blue Zones capacity, and so I'm excited to tell you a little bit more about the background. You set that stage perfectly, and so I just want to give a little bit of brief history. I'll go dive in directly on the, the five longevity hotspots. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Netflix documentary. If you haven't seen it already, I suggest that you do because it really goes deep into our founder and his discovery and his journey. So in 1990, our founder, he was actually a world cyclist, and so he traveled a lot. He, he actually won, I believe, three world Guinness records with his, uh, his bicycle, his cycling career. During that time, he came across this little area in Okinawa, Japan, and he noticed that there was these people living 100, 105 years old, still riding bikes. And he was like, what the heck are they doing? What are they doing to live so long? And so it piqued the interest to see, okay, is there any other regions around the world that people are living that long? And what is it that they're doing? Well, sure enough, they found five other, uh, four other areas. Sardinia, Italy, Ikaria, Greece, Nikoya Peninsula in Costa Rica, and our very own Loma Linda, California. And so those five areas, these, that we went, he, him and his scientists and the anthropologists and researchers, they did, they did a deep dive. They did all the data, they tried, they interviewed all these people that were living these long lives, and they finally came up with these nine principles that we call the Power Nine. So the Power Nine, they, these were all of the same things that all of these areas were, were doing, right? And so the first one was moving naturally. I find it very funny that none of these regions had a 24-hour fitness. They didn't have a gym, right? Not to knock gym-goers, because it's a great thing. You want to be, you know, cognitive of your health. But moving naturally was such a, uh, an important part of their daily life. Okinawans would sit down to have dinner, they would sit down on the floor to, you know, have family time, and so essentially, they're doing, what, 40 to 50, um, sit-ups or, or, you know, squats per day, right? And so a lot of these areas, they were moving naturally on a day-to-day basis, walking to the store, um, just natural movement. So big part, having a purpose. I don't know about you, how important it is to have a purpose, to wake up every single morning to make sure that there's something to look forward to, but that equates to adding seven years of your life by just having a purpose. Downshifting, I know there's no workaholics in here, right? They just, you don't have a problem with, uh, overworking yourself or being ambitious. I know that's a big problem, and a lot of our staff, our leaders, is not knowing how to downshift. Now, you know, balance is really important, and it's a moving target, which means you're not going to, you're not going to achieve it in one day, right? You're constantly seeking balance with your family, your loved ones. And so downshifting is a huge part of what their, the cultures did in that, those areas, too. 80% rule, I laugh about this one because in my, in my culture, in my community, the way I grew up, I don't know about you guys, but when you were at the dinner table, you weren't allowed to leave the dinner table till you did what? You finished your plate. You had to finish your plate. Why? Because, well, we don't waste food in this house. That equates to money that you're just throwing in the trash, right? And so the 80% rule is very counterintuitive to that culture that we don't, you don't have to eat the whole plate. It's okay, if you're full, you're full. And the 80% rule is a good way that, it was something that they all did, is when they were 80% full, they just stopped eating, and that's okay. Plant slant, lot of plant-based foods, and that's another reason why Loma Linda was also on the five original longevity hotspots, because they had Seventh Day Adventist, right? And a lot of them were vegan. And so part of that culture, eating a lot of plant-based foods, also attributed to the longevity at your life. This one's a fun one. Wine at Five. Not necessarily to condone alcoholism, right? This isn't something that you overconsume. It's, it's all about the connection, the social aspect, making sure that part of the downshifting, and at the end of your workday, you had a tough one maybe, and you need to go and have a glass of wine with a friend or some family members. That's really, really healthy for you because if you, you hold all that stuff in, I mean, you know, you blow up on, on your loved ones, and you end up bottling all it up, right? So Wine at Five was another attributed factor. The last three, Right Tribe. Having a really good Right Tribe, it's not about quantity of friends, right? But the quality, and you, sometimes you learn that later on in life, and that was another thing that was attributed. Having your loved ones first is very, very important for these areas as well. And then the feeling of belonging. There, there's a statistic that blows my mind that says people that live alone or lonely life, they really don't connect with people outside their home. It's like, it's an equivalent to smoking 13 to 14 cigarettes a day. And that's just because they are secluded, they're not, they're not social, and they're not volunteering at these nonprofits and, and things to get active. So those were the five, I mean, the nine, I'm sorry, the nine qualities that all of those areas had. So what does that mean for, let's say, Banning, right? Or Cali Mesa or Riverside? These are, right now, there's currently five projects, Blue Zones projects that are going on. Riverside, Banning, Coachella, Palm Springs, and Mead Valley. That's in just this county. There's, there's about 100 that are going on around the globe right now. So the purpose was, or is, sorry, to empower everyone everywhere to live better, longer. Our founder had a friend that was dubbed, have six months left to live, and the reason why he started these Blue Zones projects is he wanted to create a model to bring into communities so that people can live better, longer. Because his friend had six months left to live, and he's like, what can I do? What is there, is there something I can do to change his, his world, his environment, his behavior? He went back to, to Greece, and he ended up living 10 years longer, just based off of the environment that he was in, right? Big, big attributed to your environment. And so this came about for doing Blue Zones projects. So the life radius, right? 90% of our lives are within 20 miles of our home, and so the most unavoidable things that you can, that you can't, you can't ignore is in every single community, there's people, there's places, and there's policy. And so if you focus on your environment to where all those longevity hotspots, those people almost lived healthy accidentally. They didn't even try to live healthy. It just was part of their community, their culture, their environment. And so if you're living next to a bunch of fast food and smoke shops, liquor stores, and it's really within your vicinity, what do you think you're going to consume? Those things, right? It's wealth in, it's within your environment. So by focusing on this life radius, Blue Zones projects came about. And these are some of the things that happened through those Blue Zones projects. Albert Lee, Minnesota, was our very first Blue Zones project. That was our pilot one to see, hey, do we even have something here? Is it worth even continuing to spread, right? Sure enough, they were able to decrease medical claims costs by 49% in that area, adding three years, almost three years, to every single person's life in that community. 40%, 48% increase in tourism, which is your economic development that you were talking about. Redondo Beach was another Blue Zones project. They were able to decrease childhood obesity by 55% because they worked with the school district on their cafeteria, their director of nutrition, right? So you're starting to see, okay, well, it's, it's school districts, it's nonprofits, it's businesses, it's restaurants, it's everything that, where we go and attend, if it's, it's encumbered and it's, it's included in your environment, then it's just easier for you to make healthier choices, right? It's not as hard or difficult if it's available. Fort Worth, Texas, was a huge smoking community, right? Think about Cowboys, Marlboro Man. They were able to decrease smoking by 31% in Fort Worth, Texas by having a Blue Zones project. $27 million reduction in self-insured medical claims in the NCH healthcare system, and so, and I'll talk a little bit later on why it is that we're funded. The way we're funded is because that industry sees that there's benefits in health savings cost. So what's the process? Let's say a city, a, a lot of neighboring cities have asked me to come and speak about it to see what the process is like, what are the benefits, what are the values? And so the assessment and development phase is really the feasibility aspect. Does this community even want it? If the community doesn't really want it, if the school district, city council, the nonprofits, the business owners, restaurants, if, if there's not a big buy-in from the community, it really won't work because it's a community-led initiative. And so that feasibility study in the beginning is, is it, is it going to be feasible? And then once it is, and if it's, we, they gauged, our business development comes in and says, okay, yeah, I think they're ready. They do a foundation period where that's nine months, community input, well-being measurement, coalition building, training, blueprint development. A lot of that, we work with the, um, well-being index, the Gallup Well-being Index. So we need to see what the statistics are in that community, and then how we can better those statistics. Right now, Banning's in our first year of our transformation phase, so we have, it's a three-and-a-half-year project. So that means that I'm not going to be there for the next, or after three-and-a-half years. We focus on sustainable strategies to where when we're gone, we, we work ourselves out of a job, so that those, those places and policy, those are still there when we're gone. And so this, we're in the first year of our transformation phase, uh, I think about six months to be exact, and I'll talk about some early wins. And then, of course, the end goal is, well, you, you become a Blue Zones-approved community, right? And that's the, uh, the added value, almost like an amenity to residents, because they're like, wow, this, this is a great community that has a lot of health involvement and, in the environment. So I'm the executive director for the Banning team. Every single project has its executive director, and then we have a well-being organization lead, which Robert focuses on businesses, work sites, restaurants, schools. That's his, all the places, we call that Places pillar. Ashley focuses on the community engagement, so she is, you know, working with the press and the awareness part and community engagement. We do walking MoIs, hiking MoIs, things to, to attract people to come out outside their house and be, you know, moving, right? And then we have our public policy lead, where we work with, let's say, the school district or city council, and we work on tobacco and alcohol policies that, you know, I don't know if you guys, what the, the culture is like with the smoke shops here selling to minors, but we have that problem in Banning. And so what could we do with council to say, hey, what, right now, these people are getting slaps on the wrist for selling to a minor, and that's not okay. We need to be tougher on some policies and the ordinance to make sure that they don't do that, right? Here's some wins, just to give a brief background on the, that sector, in the people sector. Year-one engagement numbers, where we have, what, we need every single year, we have to hit a benchmark of how many people know about Blue Zones, and that's, that's on the people's side. We already completed two walking MoIs, a restaurant engagement, we've partnered with a lot of restaurants already. We've done some cooking demos. These are things in the community engagement, you know, that you, you would see also, let's say, in Cali Mesa, in the community. Like I said, places, that's what Robert focuses on, schools, restaurants. So he has eight schools registered, and you're like, well, what's, what's registered means? That basically says that that school is willing to work with Blue Zones to become a Blue Zones-approved site, which it has an entire criteria and a point system to where they need to hit certain things, right? Purpose workshops, volunteering, um, having the principals take the teachers to do an activity to where it's focused about downshifting and leadership. You know, there's an entire criteria. Same thing for restaurants, is there staff recognition programs in the restaurants to, so that they feel like they want to go to work every single day, right? Grocery stores, how can we work with grocery stores to make the, the checking aisles differently? And not Kit Kats and Snickers on the, where you check out, but what is it that we can encourage healthier items, right? So those are just some examples on the Places pillar. And then last is policy, which is my favorite, and I know some of you are probably policy geeks as well, but there's an awesome opportunities for policy changes, right? That, that really last. Built environment is just our word for infrastructure, basically. We, let's, we have some built environment, um, policies, like working with, I don't know if you guys have a safe routes to school plan or strategy, but we just had a tour today with our subject matter experts from National. They come down, we look at areas that we can work for safe routes to school. There's some intersections that kids are, are, you know, to and from school that are really unsafe. So how do we work with the city and the Public Works Department to say, hey, can we redesign this, find some grants, do some things to where it's a little bit more safer for these kids to walk to school? And that's just one for built envi, environment. Food systems, we do not have any grocery stores, um, central and eastern side of our town. It's all on Highland Springs, right? And so there's a lot of lower-income demographic on the east side of town that they may not even have the means to get all the way down there, so they have to take a bus, um, they have to rely on, you know, DoorDash or some other aspects, and so it's not convenient in their area. We don't have a grocery store. We have little mini-markets, right? But you know, if you're not a big grocery store, you, you, you get different bulk prices than you would a smaller market. So working to either acquire, get a grocery store on that side, or working with those mini-markets to make healthier choices accessible on that side of town is what we're working for food systems. And a farmer's market. We recognize that farmer's market.
Are you talking about south of the freeway or, um, along Sixth Street?
For which one?
For Banning, for markets. I'm just curious.
Oh, yeah, so we're going to have, we're projected to have it in January at Red Bull Park.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's the central, most, the central part of the town, and we recognize it needed, they need it the most. And we'll accept the, you know, the EBT market match, um, so that it goes a, a longer way. Of course, and then lastly, tobacco and alcohol policies, we're working with county supervisor right now to, uh, work on an ordinance and a legislation to ban all flavored tobacco products in all of Riverside County. And so we're, we're working with the supervisors to get that done, and then also for Banning's municipal code, we want them to, uh, adopt the same ordinance as well, just so that there's some more teeth. And if you have it at the county level and in your city, it's just, it's just a little bit stronger. And so there's alcohol policies, tobacco policies. Like I said, we have an entire blueprint. It's about a hundred-plus-page document that, it's our strategy to create sustainable strategies for the community of Banning and just Banning. The way that we really get access, right, is by having the steering committee, which, you know, we have our superintendent of schools, we, uh, we have county supervisor, we have nonprofit leaders, restaurant owners, you know, we have a, a group that we call our steering committee that meets every single month so that they could see, okay, this is where we need to focus on for council. We have a council member on our steering committee. So, you know, for him to be championing the tobacco and alcohol policies and getting access, that's how it really functions, and we hold each other accountable at the end of the day. And then we always, we have all these little sub-commissions as well that are champions for pushing that initiative forward. This is the last slide. Just wanted to show you guys that IHP, IH, IHP Foundation, Kaiser, Molina, RUHS, Banning, Coachella, City Palm Springs, Riverside, these are all fiscal agents and sponsors to make it happen so that we don't have to, we're not a nonprofit, so we don't have to go out there chasing donations. I don't know if you know the nonprofit world, but that's all you feel like you do is, can we have money for this? Can we get this funded? And so we're really, really grateful that we are already funded for this project by these fiscal agents, and they see the massive value in the, the savings as well for, uh, medical claims cost. So with that, I'll just open it up. If you guys have time for any discussion or questions, I'm, I'm willing to, uh, I'm here and I'm, I'm willing to answer that, so. And thank you for having me, though, by the way. I appreciate you guys having me today.
Councilperson, any questions?
Ashley, do. I got a few.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I saw Palm Springs on the presentation. My, my wife works over there. So she was, uh, interested, and she wanted to know, uh, what are the things that Palm Springs are doing right now for the Blue Zone areas?
Yeah, so there's the same thing, what I just delineated for Banning, it's the same thing in Palm Springs, but their blueprint's different than ours because it's tailored towards the community. So they have a lot of restaurants. So our, our goal for Banning is to have three approved restaurants for the total project because we don't have a lot of restaurants, and so that seemed feasible. Palm Springs has a lot of restaurants. So their certification criteria, that as an example, they have to hit a, a higher number of restaurants, they have to hit a higher number of grocery stores, higher number of engagement of people because it's a bigger population. So based off the population and the, the culture and the, I guess, the, the economy itself, that's how the blueprint's drafted to accommodate, you know, what the best appropriate blueprint would be.
Thank you for that. I know, um, we just passed for the Summer Wind Space, two to five, right? Where we're going to be having parks and, um, trails as well, too.
Yeah.
So this is, this is all exciting, and, um, I'm looking forward with the trails because, um, I used to, I used to bike myself. I used to bike with my dad, and, um, we used to hike a lot, too. So I know the, um, being active is very important, uh, transitioning from the medical field, being, you know, on the floors, walking down to the school district now, then I'm kind of literally in my office. It's a whole different world. I gained weight for that same reason, and, because you're not exposed to the open environment. I have to kind of put a timer on my watch to get up and walk around the, the, the building itself or outside of the parking lot, just to kind of get 15 minutes of walking. So, and it's, and it's true, it's, uh, we get consumed with our daily work, just being indoors or, um, not going out there, being very active because time goes by pretty quick, and then we have activities with the family as well, um, which makes it even more challenging.
Right.
So I, I am very excited, I'm very excited to even see IHP, Kaiser, Molina, and the Riverside University there, too. And I'm looking forward to see our, our Cali Mesa logo up there as well, too. So, uh, but with that, you know, I'd like to make a motion or request that the Blue Zone Project partnership will be brought back to the formal council agenda, item for discussion for possible direction for staff.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's all of us, thank you.
And yeah, and just so that you're aware, that it's above my pay grade, I just, I contact Business Development, and they, they take it there, you know, from there, and they'll work with you guys to coordinate, um, you know, calendars, dates, and all, all the jazz. So I'm just here telling you what my experience has been in Banning, and it's, it's been great, and I'm, I'm a Banning raised boy, and so I'm just, I'm glad that I get, you know, serve in that capacity.
Thank you, Ruben.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ruben.
Okay, communications from the public, I have one slip. Howard Reeves.
My name is Howard Reeves, I live at 1017 Douglas Street, Cali Mesa. I'm a mayor, councilmember, city staff. I'd like to make a council aware of my opinion of how the trunk-or-treat went last Friday night. As you guys know, my wife's the commissioner for the library, and she worked with, what's your name, Darlene? Is that your name? Darlene here. And, uh, one of the big things that we, we asked Darlene was, we don't want to give out candy. That's a lot of sugar and stuff. So Darlene was so gracious to switch us over to chips. And the chips now come in bags about this big. And even the people that picked them up for their kid, they go, where'd you get them from? I don't know, somebody bought them and gave them to me. And, uh, but that's the trick-or-treat bag chips now for the, for the kids, which is a great idea for these manufacturers to do that, but, uh, so, uh, so we had probably, I don't know, maybe eight or 12 different brands of different makes of chips, you know, of all different kinds. So the kids got, we laid them across the tailgate of the truck, and the kids got to pick whichever one they wanted. And, uh, but, uh, this is our third year, my wife and I doing this, and, uh, the first two years, we, we ran out of stuff, okay? But, uh, so the staff, I got to commend you guys, you did a great job this year because you, they gave us 10 boxes of chips, and we went through eight of them. And when I, and on those boxes, I added up the, uh, amount of chips that was in each box that we went through, 600 chips we gave out. And we gave two boxes of chips back to the city for future use. And, uh, but they really went over really popular. It was a great turnout. I really recommend, commend the staff for a great job, and the city for doing a great job. And, uh, we had a steady flow of people from, when they opened the gates at 5:00, they were ready to come in. They were lined up and waiting to come in. And it was just a great, a great event all the way. I think the, uh, the, the battery packs for the lights that the city used was a great idea this year because last year, we kind of got some darkness out there, but they put up those floodlights down, up and down the parking lot with those battery packs, and that really gave the light to where people could see because it got dark before we got out of there. So, so I'm, we're really pleased that we were there and got to see this, and I just wanted to share it with you people, my observation of how it went, and I think it really went well, had a great turnout. And, and I know there was, uh, a, a lot of people there from the community, that, the Summer Wind community that was there, even, what's your name, sir?
Santa.
He, he, he even showed up. Was he, did he turn out to be Santa Claus? Okay. So that's all I have, but it was just a great, great thing. I just wanted to share that with you guys, and it really went over well, and how much, how much we handed out. So we know that we had at least 600 kids go through this year, so we got a record of it now, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Howard. Any other comments? Okay. Okay, we're now at the, a part of our agenda where we, um, have the opportunity, councilpersons have an opportunity to take anything off the consent calendar. There are six items. If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda consent calendar and waive the readings of, all, the full readings of ordinances.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, passes five, oh, thank you very much. Okay, that takes us now to Sheriff Captain's report. Captain Northrup.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Due to this meeting being so close to the beginning of the month, Part One Crimes are going to be incomplete and obviously subject, subject to change. For the month of October, we had two aggravated assaults, one burglary, one auto theft, and 14 larceny thefts. There were approximately 26 arrests for the month and about 434 incidents. Just a few significant incidents, I just want to kind of go over real quick. On October 8th, deputies responded to a fatal traffic collision involving a single rider single rider motorcycle in the area of Cherry Valley Boulevard, east of Cali Mesa Boulevard. Deputies arrived at the collision scene and learned from California Highway Patrol, who was already on scene, that the rider had succumbed to his injuries. The, we borrowed a, a traffic team from a neighboring station. They came out and did the, the investigation. So the Cherry Valley Boulevard was closed for several hours during the course of that investigation. Then on October 23rd, Cali Mesa deputy responded to a flock hit of a stolen vehicle in the area of Cali Mesa Boulevard and Singleton. The deputy located the vehicle, conducted a felony stop on County Line Road at the I-10, which prompted an emergency response for backup deputies. Upon arrival, the vehicle was recovered and the suspect was taken into custody without incident. Then on October 25th, the Cali Mesa deputy responded to a rapidly evolving situation at a business in the 1100 block of Cali Mesa Boulevard. Riverside County Dispatch broadcast information regarding a male subject inside the business armed with a knife that was making slashing movements towards other patrons. Recognizing the seriousness of the situation, the deputy immediately requests, responded with lights and sirens and requested sheriff's dispatch enter a real time mode to ensure there was no delays in the flow of updated information. Real time mode basically means that the, this, the caller goes straight to the dispatcher and that information's relayed rather than going from the caller to our PSAP or our phone operator than to dispatch. So it, it expedites information and gives it more of a real time response. Upon arrival, the suspect had exited the business and was located in the parking lot. The deputy, deputy immediately engaged that uncooperative suspect. A use of force occurred. And at the time, the patrol sergeant was about a minute out. He responded in an emergency response and they were able to take the suspect into custody and nobody was injured in the incident. So that's a, just a few kind of incidents that kind of gained some attention in the public and, you know, with the response, emergency responses and stuff like that, people tend to ask what was going on. So lastly, the holiday season is here. In an effort to reduce crime, we are, we're going to ask citizens not to leave gifts, gifts in plain sight and unattended vehicles, right? In order to reduce crime. And then we always ask that they report any suspicious activity or criminal or crimes that they see. So, is it any questions?
No, I was just going to make a recommendation. Since we have so many mobile parks, I know from my citizen patrol days that people leave their vehicles in their driveway unlocked or the garage doors open late. And that's just an invitation for, for trouble. I know even at my property, I have a locked gate and I still lock my car doors. It, it'd be nice if we could put something maybe on our website, Will, for, for the holiday season to remind people to lock their cars, even if it's in their driveway and make sure their garage doors closed before dark because it's just opportunity for, it's just opportunity. So, and, and seniors, you know, they don't think in, in those terms, but they're probably usually the worst, the first targets.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. We can also remind patrol staff to drive through those areas, stop and point those things out to our citizens in order to reduce some of the thefts that we've been seeing.
And also being at the ATM, people, you know, be aware of your around, your surroundings.
Yeah. Always be aware of your surroundings, right? Not just in the holiday season, but during the holiday season, we do see an increase of maybe people being followed out to the car. You know, our suspects like, our thieves like to watch as people put belongings in the car and then walk away to go do some more shopping. Ultimately, you know, we end up with increased thefts because of that. So.
Thank you so much. Jeff?
Captain, if I may, just ask a follow-up question. You mentioned holiday season and then the, an increase in maybe some thefts. Made me think of, maybe you can share some tips on some best practices for, you know, delivering of packages. I, I've had some neighbors lose some packages off their front porch, you know, deliveries. Have you noticed an in, like a, an influx or increase in this area? Or what can people do to maybe minimize that?
I think the best thing that you can do is have a camera in front of your house, right? If, most people in the city work. They're not home during the day. Keep, keep surveillance cameras. If you're going to have packages, come to your house, you know, make sure that those cameras are on, activated and ask that the package get delivered and placed in front of that camera. So, and then again, report it, right? Oftentimes I see or hear of thefts that go unreported. And we certainly can't make arrests if we don't know that the crimes are occurring. So we can't respond and increase patrols or deviate from our patrol practices to find those, those areas that are seeing those increases and try to reduce them without knowing that the crimes are occurring.
Thank you, Captain, for that report. The deputies are okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. And great job. Pass that along to them. That's outstanding to be able to, to, to make those apprehended, you know, without incident, those kinds of things. So great job.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions?
I got one. I'll echo what Eric said. Follow that message to your, to your team as well too. I'm not sure if this is appropriate for, for traffic around the schools or, or doing open comments for like, so, but our, our community around the Summer Winds community at the Summer Winds School, it apparently looks like there's a, there's this particular vehicle that is parking and leaving their car unattended, like almost blocking in the middle of the, of the street and picking up their kids from school and then going back. I'm sure if you guys want to just kind of follow up with that, I got some pictures and license plates as well too, but I'm pretty sure it's probably happening around different schools as well too within our city boundaries. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'll follow up with whatever you guys need so I can.
Yeah. So as you might have seen, we did put out a, a public safety announcement on parking, some other traffic related issues in and around the schools. Some time constraints and other priorities, we haven't been able to enforce that as much as we would like. However, it's an ongoing priority for us and we will continue to try to educate the public as well as enforce some of those parking and other traffic laws when needed.
Captain, don't this, don't the schools also have like staff that kind of monitors? I mean, I, I know they have directions on where people are supposed to come in. I mean, not all parents follow the rules, especially within a hurry to get their kids or what have you. But don't they make a good effort to have schools like pickup zones and drop off zones?
Yeah. So, yes, right. They, most schools do put out staff, particularly during pickup in the afternoon or evening hours to make sure that the traffic flows better. But ultimately, you know, you're going to get a lot of cars parked waiting for their kids for, you know, 10, 15, 20 minutes, sometimes longer. Sometimes they got to wait for one child that gets out at hypothetically three o'clock. The other one gets out at 3:15. So now you get cars parked there for 30, 35 minutes. And, and the other issue is a lot of times these schools don't have enough parking for, for this, this traffic, especially during recess when evening hours when schools let out. So you might have, you know, 100 parking spaces and you got 1,000 kids. So that, you know, you're going to get parking on public roadways.
It's been a long time since I had to pick up kids at school. I remember those days. Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you for a great report.
Thank you.
How are you tonight?
Hi, excuse me. Doing well, Mayor, Council. I'll keep it short. Our calls for service from this time last year are up about 20%. Sorry, I was speaking to Mike. Of that, about 20, just took over 20% are EMS related calls. And, and some of those are due to an increase in calls assisting you with our auto aid agreement. Aside from that, our response times are steady at about six and a half minutes. And other than the structural we had a couple of weeks ago, no significant calls for service. End of my report.
That's good news. Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay.
I think it was Sun, Saturday, Sunday, I saw the, the fire department on the freeway. I think there was a trailer RV and a truck kind of, there's a pretty bad accident. So I did see the team working hard. So I appreciate that. And if you can tell the team, thank you for their services as well too. Appreciate that.
Appreciate that. I will soon to give that back to them.
Thanks.
Thank you, Edgar. Okay. We'll go on to item number seven. It's a business item. Professional Services Agreement for a Strategic Plan Update and Organization Mission, Vision and Values Assessment.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is a professional service agreement with Jacob Green and Associates to lead the city through an update of our strategic plan and to conduct a comprehensive review of our mission, vision and value statement. The city's last strategic plan was adopted in 2020, shortly before the pandemic. While the plan served as an excellent foundation, a lot has changed in Cali Mesa since then, both in our organization and in our community. We've grown by nearly 2,000 residents, welcomed new council members and experienced significant staff transitions at multiple levels of leadership. At the same time, we've made major progress on the original plan's goals, many of which were achieved despite the challenges of COVID-19. Best practices recommend that strategic plans are, be refreshed every three to five years to reflect new realities, emerging priorities and community expectations while being mindful of any resource constraints. This update gives us an opportunity to not just look forward, but also to make sure the organization is aligned internally and externally on where we're headed. A big part of this effort will also involve reviewing the city's mission, vision and values, which were created many years ago, long before the last strategic plan. Since that time, Cali Mesa has evolved significantly. Our demographics have shifted, our regional role has expanded and our organization has matured. So this is an ideal time to revisit those guiding statements to make sure they still reflect who we are as an organization and what we aspire to be as a community. Finally, this process is important not just for the council, but for staff. As city manager, I'm responsible for carrying out the policy direction of the council as a whole, not the individual goals or preferences of any one member. A clear adopted strategic plan helps ensure that staff has a unified roadmap to follow. It provides clarity, prevents conflicting directions and keeps the organization focused on what the council collectively determines as the city's top priorities. Jacob Green and Associates comes highly recommended with extensive experience working with California cities and a proven track record of facilitating collaborative, inclusive and actionable planning processes. Staff believes they're an excellent fit for Cali Mesa and will help us create a plan that continues to build on the city's strong foundation while charting a clear path forward. And tonight, joining us from Jacob Green and Associates is Dave Brown, who will be, I believe, one of the people that will be involved in our project. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Will. The report was a great reminder from back to 2020. It was a, a good workshop with Henry, Henry, yeah. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Dave Brown, did you want to speak? I apologize. I called you, Ruben. You didn't, you didn't correct me. I meant, I saw him outside. I go, hi, Ruben. I apologize.
Thank you.
Don't call you late for dinner, right?
Mayor, appreciate that very much. Appreciate the opportunity. And I do want to thank the staff, first of all, number one, for putting us first on your agenda tonight. I realize we're the only item on your agenda for, I appreciate it very, very much. But in all seriousness, I just, we just want to say thank you on, on behalf of the entire organization for considering us, selecting us out of truly a group of very qualified firms. We are California based. Our sweet spot is small and midsize cities, counties and special districts in the state. We really love working with, with smaller communities. And so our team's super excited to get started. I can certainly answer any questions. I know that you've, you've got our proposal. The city manager's staff report was very thorough and I don't want to bore you by going over any more of that, but I'm certainly willing to answer any questions you might have about the proposal or about the, the contract.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate you for being here. I think this is an important item. I've been a lot of kind of thought, thought to this. And as Will kind of mentioned, it's kind of helped us to give directions. So deciding policy is the reason we're here, the most important thing that we do. And so having some, some direction for staff, for council. But I think the most important aspect of it being, starting with the community engagement. So that was some of the questions I had is it kind of all starts there. So it gives us an opportunity because I feel sometimes we don't get as much engagement necessarily in this, in this, in this realm as far as planning, strategic planning, what are you looking for versus just, you know, specific issues that might arise that we address with the community. But to actually be involved in what do you want this city to look like and, and the direction of, of policy on this broader scale. So that's what interests me the most. So my question is just what, what are you going to be able to do? Because sometimes I feel like it's a challenge to bring the community in, get enough feedback to like a, a, a meaningful amount of, of feedback that, you know, could be useful to us. I was just interested in what, what you do to try to, I'm sure it's a challenge everywhere you go.
Yeah, it certainly is, Councilmember Manley. And, and it's a great question. Every community is different and we don't have, we always say in JJ, we don't own any cookie cutters. We just don't believe in cookie cutter proposals or cookie cutter approaches. And so we, what we do, our first, our first effort in every strategic plan is to get to know the community. Our, our, our team will be in, in contact with your primary point of contact from the very beginning, getting every document we can get our hands on. We certainly have the previous strategic plan. I know that the mayor and, and others worked on. But we will engage at, at a level that you probably have not seen before. We'll do a tremendous number of one-on-one interviews, both with, with, obviously with the council and the executive team. But we'll also recommend that we do one-on-one interviews with key stakeholders in the community that you identify. And we also, we also, and from our, from our one-on-one interviews and, and the, and the research that we do on the, on our, our communities, we develop customized community surveys from that. And so we gather the information, we talk to the key stakeholders and, and to the, the leadership and policymakers, and then we develop a comprehensive survey to survey the community. We, we, we certainly can do focus group meetings. We can do, we're not, we're not big fans of, of large workshops. We just find that the information that comes out of those, sometimes in a larger group like that, isn't as valuable and is, and as, you know, meaty and, and really honest as those one-on-ones and those surveys and engaging the community. But we're certainly, we'll work with, with city manager and, and the staff and, and obviously they'll take direction from you because Cali Mesa is a very different community from other communities. And so we'll, to answer your question more directly, we'll reach out to you and we'll ask the team here in Cali Mesa what, what you think would work. But then we'll bring ideas to the table as well so that we know that when we do that, that when we do get to the, to the workshop with, with you and with the executive team, we've got a tremendous amount of input to, to work with on that day. Great question. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. So it is a very important item for our city and for our residents here for, for Cali Mesa as, you know, we're, we're in the beginning stages of growing. And, you know, for me, it's more because, you know, I come from the medical field and now education and seeing it both ways now, our youth is the future. You know, there's our future leaders, they're going to be providing back to our community. We're going to get older, we're not going to get any younger. So our youth is going to be the ones providing their support for us. And we, I, I want to leave it for the youth, for them to be successful of what we're building now. And then when you take over, I want them to make it better how we left it. And that's been my, my thing all the time that when I speak with these kids at school. So, you know, one of the things that I really, you know, I, I saw in the agenda item that you're going to be meeting with us for an hour, right? One by one to kind of see what, what we want for our city. And for me, one of the things that I, I wanted to bring is, you know, medical facilities, you know, more for the youth, good paying, good paying jobs for the positions for those as well too. I am against of other so many other things because I think about our youth that they should be working for good companies, like medical facilities becoming, going in there as boot collars and moving up to become leaders. And then, and with that, we'll support our law enforcement because that brings, that brings in the taxes, that brings in all the revenue for them to be, to grow within our city, same thing with our fire department and our other services with public health, our, our public services within city, our, our staff to grow as a city as one as well too. With that, so I'm going to, just want to say, you know, you know, thank you, Will, and the staff for bringing this, you know, item forward. for bringing this, you know, item forward. And it's more than just planning documents, it's our chance to shape the next chapter of Cala Mesa's growth. As we move through this process, I want to highlight two priorities that I hear constantly from our residents, the need for medical facilities and the good paying jobs right here in our community. Families shouldn't have to drive 30 to 40 minutes for urgent care or specialty services. We have an aging population and growing families who deserve access to local healthcare clinics, urgent care centers, and medical offices that serve their needs close to home. At the same time, we have to focus our economical development that creates stable, high-quality jobs, the kind that allows the residents to live and work in the same city, jobs that support families, straightens our tax base, and helps small businesses to thrive. As part of this strategic plan, I would like to consider policies and partnerships that attract healthcare providers, encourage private investment in medical infrastructures, and expand opportunities for workforce development, especially for youth entering the job market. When we invest in health and opportunity, we're investing in the future of Cala Mesa. I'm confident that with this plan and this council, we can continue to develop a city that is safe, healthy, and economically strong for everyone who calls it home. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
I have to say that, for the, you know, the strategic planning geek that I am, that just wants me to engage with you and ask you a ton of questions about it, and that's what we'll do in our one-on-ones, is we'll have those really deep conversations about, because all of yous clearly have things that you're so passionate about for Cala Mesa. And that's our job, is to pull that out, so appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I want to say thanks to staff for selecting a great consultant for this project. I know there was quite a few applicants, it looks like, and you spent some time vetting those and finding the very best, so thank you. I also have a question about, a couple of questions for you. First, the, so the strategic plan update, does that mean we're going to completely, does update, I guess, mean completely revise? Or does it, you know, does it mean just work with the existing one and give us a new version of that, or are we going to develop an entirely new one?
It's really a great question, and the executive team might have heard this next mantra that we have in our company. And we have a various, and we adhere to this, when we come into a community and start working with a client, our focus is evolution, not revolution, because there's so many good things going on in Cala Mesa. There's, the plan from 2020 has got some great stuff that I know you haven't been able to get to. Nobody predicted that you'd enter a pandemic the month after you passed. So, evolution, not revolution, is our mantra that we'll come to the table with, and we will guide you and facilitate you through a process that holds dear, the things that are dear to Cala Mesa, but also leaves room for some evolution.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for that. So I also appreciate the six-month project roadmap that you gave us. That was really helpful to see the big picture of that. And I was too remembering back to 2020, I was a new council member back then and going through this process, and it was really a great team-building exercise, as well as valuable, the end result was incredibly valuable for the city. So I'm looking forward to doing that with this group and engaging through that process and identifying our priorities and goals and vision. So, real exciting, so thank you.
We are too. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. It was a good refresher. It brought back a lot of, I went through all the goals, and we've accomplished some already, some really good ones, and so I'm looking forward to meeting the changes in our city since then. So I'm really looking forward to this too. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you so much.
So at this point, then, if there's no other, if there's no further discussion, I'd look for a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Jacob Green and Associates, Inc., for a strategic plan update and assessment of the city's mission, vision, and value statement in the amount of $77,600, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you so much. Okay, this brings us to mayor and council reporting of county and regional meetings and conferences. Eric, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had no regional meetings that I attended, but I did attend the, it was basically the summary of draft zero regulation. This was done on October 23rd with a committee, it's a three-person committee up in Sacramento. You and I had spoken about that, city manager and others. And I've been outspoken about this zone zero thing, about the impact it may have on our citizens. And ironically, when I asked the question, the meeting was from 10 o'clock in the morning till about 4 o'clock in the afternoon via Zoom, when I finally got to my time to ask the questions about the impact insurance companies are going to have, can they deny claims, what's the likelihood of that, they just tossed the ball back over to the Department of Insurance, and they said, well, that's not our field, we're just implementing policy right now. And so with no regard as to what it's going to do cost-wise, or, you know, people living paycheck to paycheck, someone in our community, and retirees and the like, it was not very comforting to hear that. But ultimately, there was several people, I'd say 160 roughly, that were on this Zoom, half of which were in favor of it, and the other half which were not. But it looks like what they're looking to do is adopt some options, and I'll just share what those are looking like for you guys at this time. So of the vegetation option for zone zero, meaning nothing vegetation-wise or combustible from the exterior of a structure or your residence to five feet out, they had several options to include nothing, meaning that everything had to be removed. Another one, which had some pots with plants in it, and then what seemed to be the one that everyone that was in favor of it, which was about half of those folks, which would allow plants in pots and other vegetation in zone zero, but prohibited dead or dying plants, needles, leaves, weeds, et cetera, combustible mulches. So it seemed to be a compromise that they were at least exploring. It's still, I make the argument, I don't believe embers are going to care whether there's a five-foot buffer zone. Wind and embers is a terrible combination, and if your home is not hardened, it's going to find its way somehow in there. But regardless, that was one of the options. And then as it pertains to trees, there was only two options, the first being well-maintained trees were allowed within five feet of buildings, or option two, which seemed to be what everyone was going to, was well-maintained trees allowed, branches must be at least 10 feet away from chimneys or stacks from homes. So I share that with you guys and for those residents in our city, because once this happens, there's no mechanism of enforcement. And when Chief O'Connell was here with us, you know, explaining this to us, it doesn't seem that there's going to be any kind of effort on our city's behalf to go out and force residents to do that. I don't think we have the stomach to do that. I'm not speaking for everyone, I'm just sharing my thoughts on that. But ultimately, when a home burns down, God forbid, but these things happen, what are the insurance companies going to do? We still don't have an answer to that. So I'm going to, in the next week or two, I'm going to try to reach out and find out with a point of contact at the Department of Insurance where they stand on this or what's going to happen with it, because there's no, there's no direction, no answer yet from that, so.
Did they mention anything about if residents do follow what's recommended, that there's a break in insurance costs? Did they even address that?
So they did address that, and they said there is no guarantee that there would be a break in insurance cost, which, again, makes it kind of silly. Why are they pushing this? It seemed to me that a one-size, that was the common theme, was one-size doesn't fit all, because a lot of the people that were in favor of it were Northern California folks, you know, Berkeley area, San Francisco, around that area. The folks that were in opposition to it seemed to be mostly Central and Southern California. Yeah, but there's no guarantee, they can't, this committee is not going to speak for the insurance companies and tell us, yes, you're going to get a break, insurance costs are going to go down because of it, or even as a whole, because we all know our insurance rates go up when there's a fire. It may not even be in our region, in our general area, but our costs go up because there's so many claims going in, and that's the way insurance companies operate, unfortunately. So it was not very, it was very disheartening, you know, but I just want to share that with you guys, because it's coming whether we want it or not. You know, they're going to do something. And I think it's going to be unfortunate for our citizens that can't afford to remove wood fencing, vinyl fencing, all these different types of combustible materials away from their homes to accommodate this zone zero. So that's all I have to share. If I get any more information on that, I'll be happy to bring it to you.
Thank you for spending all that time on it, something that affects all of us. Thank you, Eric. John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. October 29th, I attended a Parks, had a committee, two-by-two with Beaumont Cherry Valley Parks Department, so we just had our ongoing conversation about our future partnership with them. And on Halloween, I attended our little trunk-or-treat, so I appreciate all the staff being out there on their day off, and then there was, it was, as previously stated, well-attended, people were coming and going the whole time, and the whole neighborhood was out there having a good time, nice and active out there. And that will conclude my report.
Thank you. Eric?
I got a few. First, I would like to take a brief moment and share an important update with the city staff, my colleagues, and with our community. I'm truly honored to share that I've been appointed to serve as Cala Mesa representative on the Riverside County Community Action Commission, representing not only our city, but all of District Five. This commission brings together the county leaders and local agencies with one shared goal, to strengthen our communities, identify needs, connect resources, and expanding programs to support our families and our seniors and our youth. As your council member, and now as your voice on the commission, my commitment is simple, is to make sure that Cala Mesa needs are heard and that the resources available across Riverside County reach the people who need them the most, right here, at home, and within our district, whether it's housing stability, food security, utility assistance, and workforce development. I will be working to open more doors to opportunities for our residents. I will also continue to sharing updates with the council and our community as new initiatives and grant opportunities become available, because progress only happens when everyone is informed and engaged. I want to thank the city leaders, our city staff, our city manager, and our partners at the Riverside County for their trust and collaboration. Together, we are shaping a stronger, healthier, and more connected Cala Mesa, one where every resident has opportunity to thrive. For the Halloween stuff, I would like to take a moment to share what we did for Beaumont Unified School District, hosted an incredible Halloween event this year. It was an honor to participate, I was Santa Claus, and it was wonderful to see so many students and families come together for such a fun and a creative celebration. Each department decorated their area with their special themes, and our student support services shows the Polar Bear Express. The students absolutely loved it, and I was proudly sure that our department was voted best theme in the district by students themselves, ranging from TK through 5th grade. It was a joyful event and truly reflected a creativity, collaboration, and community spirit of our district staff. I'm grateful to everyone who helped make it a success for our families and for being part of a such a memorial evening for our students. And for our city event, I would like to take a moment to highlight Cala Mesa's Halloween event at the Summer Winds Charles Park. It was an incredible event, filling, filled with community spirit and laughter and joy. I continue my tradition, dressing up as Santa Claus, as most of you guys saw me dress as a Santa Claus. I was utilizing my voice, ho, ho, ho. And it was a wonderful place, smiles, and the children's faces as they came for the candy and photos. Events like this remind us that makes Cala Mesa so special, our sense of togetherness and our commitment to giving back. I want to thank our amazing staff, the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department for showing up and giving their time to make this event such a success. Their participation truly shows what it means to serve our community with heart. It was a beautiful night in Cala Mesa, filled with families' fun and community pride, a perfect reflection of what our city stands for. Now, so you know how we attended the Cal City's conference, spent almost a month. I saw all these awards that other cities were being given and stuff, so with that, I would like to ask if we could explore opportunities for Cala Mesa to participate in California City Awards programs through Cal Cities. These programs recognize cities across the state for innovation, collaboration, and excellence in public service. Although we're a very small city, our staff continues to grow, our staff continues to go above and beyond every day, delivering exceptional results and creating real impact for our residents. I believe it's important that we showcase our dedication and hard work at that state level as well too. I would like to suggest that our city manager look into the process and eligibility requirements for these awards, so that we can highlight the great work happening here in Cala Mesa and give our team the recognition that they truly deserve. And that will include my.
Thank you, Eric. Jeff?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. So along with Councilmember Manley, I attended the ad hoc for the Parks and Community Ad Hoc Commission. What he didn't mention is it was during Game Five of the World Series, so it was quite a sacrifice on our behalf to attend.
Go Dodgers!
Go Dodgers! So we ended up losing, so it wasn't that big a deal, and it was a quick meeting. And one bit of information came out of that, though, was, as Councilmember Manley said, we're working on the partnership in the broader community, and that they've rebranded themselves, no longer are they the Beaumont Cherry Valley Parks Rec, but they're, can we say this, Will? Or no?
Yeah, they passed a resolution.
Passed a resolution, so they're the Pass Area Rec District. Did I get that right, name right?
It's the Pass Area Recreation Park District.
Yes, Park District, and the idea behind that is because they want to be more a pass area, so not just for Beaumont or Cherry Valley, but they want to represent the entire pass area, and they want their name to represent that. And so I think it's a good idea. So more details to come, Councilmember Manley and I, as we sit on that ad hoc. I also attended the WR COG today, there'll be a report of that forthcoming. RCA was canceled today due to a lack of substantive issues. And also just want to give a shout-out thanks to staff for their organizing the trunk-or-treat event. I did not attend, but I've heard great things from those who did, so thank you to all those involved in that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. It was so much fun. My family's already fired me for next year giving a candy. Gave out too many pieces of candy. Okay, I attended several county meetings. First on the 23rd, RTA Board Meeting, where they handled routine finance, on-time performance reports, approving holiday events, and purchasing of vehicles, and also had their selection of nomination committee for officers. Attended on the 24th, the MetroLink Board Meeting. Most, what's happening in the MetroLink meetings, there are five counties that are discussed. There's been a series of train incidents, quite a few. I didn't know there was such a thing as death by train, and that's where you hear about people dying on the tracks. But we also had a couple of trains hit other trains, so that's a big issue, because it affects ridership, people are late, schedules are offset, and that, you know, at some point affects funding, so that's a serious issue. Attended the RCTC Budget and Implementation Committee that I chair, and they also cover routine financial reporting, have a federal legislative update, which most entities have. But at this meeting, they went over the 2026 Transportation Improvement Program Projects Recommendation List to the state. And so while none of them were ours, two that are being forwarded for the state have an impact on us, and one is the I-10 Highlands Springs Project, that's being postponed because they're not ready to move forward, so the money's being taken from them and given to another project that'll be funded, and they'll be back on track for the 26, 28-year. Also, the most important thing to me was the Pennsylvania Grade Separation Project. That affects, that's not in our city, but it affects travel and people being stranded emergency services and people, because the train tracks stop traffic. And so they're moving forward with, and forwarding that project to the state for approval. Hopefully, it'll be approved by CTC, California Transportation Committee. And then RCTC is in the process of, again, swapping funds for projects that are more ready, and, excuse me?
I think we know of a project that is going to be ready for funding, so just putting that out there.
Yes, we do. Our Cherry Valley Project. Okay. Okay, and more, more, more to come on that, right? Okay, and then also, I'd like to commend the city for their free spay and neuter clinic. I, I'm still scratched up from my cats, bringing my cats in, was, it was, I think it was fully booked within a day. It was a great, great mobile crew that came out and did that. Also, the trunk or treat, you know, our staff is, I, I can't compare them to anyone else, they put on a show, they should have, while they all wear multiple hats, but you guys did a wonderful job, and there were a lot of kids, a lot of kids that came, the line was long before we even opened at 5:00, and right up until we closed at 7:00, people were still coming in, great costumes, great fun for everybody, it was a lot of fun. And those lights with the portable generators, beautiful, I forgot the name of them, Jaisa told me, but they were, they put, Jaisa put them up herself, they're really fantastic, so I'm glad we have some of those, I'd like to get some myself. And then, let's see, obviously, everybody got adjusted to the time change, and I think that's all that I had to cover, yep, that's all that I had. So with that, thank you, Angelina, for coming. That brings us to our city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to thank staff, I had planned to attend, and as, in addition to be a city manager, you also know I'm the father of three teenagers, all of who are very active socially, and so they had three different plans, and there's only, there's three of them and only two, two of us, my wife and I, so I had to attend to that and drive people all over town and get, you know, people fed coming, that were coming to our house, so it was, that was the reason I couldn't attend, but I'm glad it went, went well, no doubt, I had no doubt in my mind that it would, our staff is just unbelievable, they're awesome, and I'm, I'm so appreciative that I get to work with them every day. Couple of animal control updates, you mentioned the spay and neuter clinic on the 28th, that was a great success here. We are scheduling another one, so, you know, as the council knows, we do have a two-by-two by two, I think, by two-by-two.
Right.
Committee with other cities in the region to talk about animal control and, and long-term solutions. But one of the things that we had talked about was, in the short term, we could partner for a spay and neuter clinic through our, our contract with the county, and so we are doing that. We have it scheduled for, at this point, for, on November 18th at Beaumont City Hall, and it will be open to not only Calamasa, it'll be open to Calamasa, Beaumont, and Banning residents, and so we expect that will fill up very, very quickly. So we will be putting out more information on that, but again, that's November 18th at Beaumont City Hall. And lastly, the county, as another part that came out of the two-by-two, is in our lobby in our senior center, we now are the proud owner of a pet ID tag machine engraver, so residents can come in and pick up a free tag for their, for their pet. It's part of the county's No Naked Pet Campaign, they want to try to get an ID tag in addition to chipping for all pets, so that if they do get lost, it helps them reunite them with their owner. So they provided one to us, they also provided machines to the cities of Banning and Beaumont as well. So they came by, dropped it off, and we actually made a few for our seniors that we were getting ready for a fit after 50 when they came in, so it was really good timing, and so they made, you know, several tags for, for the seniors, and they were very happy about that, but it's free, completely free for people to come in and get a tag for their pet, so they just stop by the senior center whenever, whenever open. No, we, we have staff that will assist, so they trained Victoria, our new senior center manager, on how to use the machine. The other cool thing about it is it's pretty portable, so we can, in future events, we can also bring it with us, and they said that usually works out really well, it's really popular, so it's very, I mean, they showed me how to use it, it's very easy to use, very user-friendly, so we're, we're excited what that can do for us, so. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Will, I just had a question, I don't know if maybe you know this or not, I, I brought, I had feral cats, and I brought them in, I, I feed them, but they, they live on my property, but they offered chipping, they didn't say whether they charge you for that, normally vets charge for that, that, do they charge for?
No, so that's, they will chip, if the, if the pet is not already chipped, they will chip it for you as part of the spay and neuter.
Okay.
And they'll do that for free of charge.
Well, I couldn't see chipping a feral cat, but I mean, that's a great service, that's a great service.
Yeah, it is, and that, because that is also, you know, anything, you know, the more they can do to reunite pets.
Right.
Even though there's a cost of doing it upfront, right, but the, the other side of that is shelter space and, you know, trying to track down owners, and there's so much more that goes to it, plus it's, you know, the most humane thing to be able to unite, you know, if people want to be united with their pets, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's a free service.
Thank you, they, they are very, very efficient, and a lot of people, people lined up quickly.
Yeah, they, we ended up doing, I believe, 25 altogether, but they usually have spots for 30, so I guarantee you 30 will be done on the, on the 18th.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay.
That's a great question, so the question was, what's the weight limit? Because it's the mobile clinic and small, the weight limit is 20 pounds, so it is geared towards small animals. So if, if larger, if they want to bring larger animals for, animals in for spay and neutering, they would have to go to the shelter, they can offer that at the shelter, though.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, without any further discussion, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:16, and look forward to seeing everyone back here on November 17th at 6:00 PM. Thank you all for coming, thank you for presenting.